...when I was a kid up in Langford. And they would literally park us and work my way. We'd get up before the morning and they're digging up our lawn like we were birds. My dad was a cop, so that ended it.
My best.
They're all out.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, they would park us in, camp for our land and pivot and then fish me. I mean, we wouldn't let them walk through and down there.
That's what I'm worried.
There should have come with pairs.
Yeah.
Yes, I did that one. So that was all the top part.
That's on the wall.
Yeah.
Nice.
It's funny because I went down there, Sunday, and then I started Thursday, you know. I didn't know what was going on there.
Yeah. Yeah. When's that going to be done? It looks like it's mostly done. Probably at least three quarters.
Is that all the equipment that's coming?
Equipment, I don't know. I'll tell you the truth.
Wasn't a whole lot.
No, there was maybe six pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I assumed it would be bigger, like, I guess.
Well, it was two. We went and bought a lot of the grant we got too. Yeah, so we put out a bid for a couple of projects. And before they repealed the RCO.
The RCO. They changed it to the RCO.
It's a responsible contractor. So anything over $20,000 that's been like borrowed had to be removed completely. They repealed it, so now we got 15,000. And you got your...
We were going to lose that grant, yeah.
Right.
I was ready to go get my control gun and start doing whatever. I'm not losing this damn grant. I'm going to put this sucker together. It does open up the competition a little bit, yeah.
Just change, not the whole thing.
It's just the money amount, right?
No. Keeps that, and that the company has to have.
It was a friendship, a union that didn't have... Right. Right. Yeah, it really needed that harmony.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's all pretty. Yeah. It's a wonderful place.
Okay, seven o'clock, right?
Good evening, everyone. We will call to order the regular meeting of Marshall Borough Council, March 18th, 2019. If y'all please rise for a moment of silence and our Pledge of Allegiance first. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Get a roll call, Virginia.
Here.
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 We don't have any announcements or special presentations tonight, so we will go into public comment. I'll remind everyone that we have a three-minute time on it. Please state your name and address for the record when you come up. And there'll be a timer to remind you that if you could just finish up after three minutes, thank you for cooperating with that. First one on the list is Jack Buckman. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jack Buckman, 617 Rutland Road. When the previous council voted to eliminate the position of controller five to four, I believed that that would be a good decision due to the problems with the borough code. But my question to you, and I could go into that other thing with what's wrong with the code as it pertains to the controller position at another time, but was that legal? Because it was five-four, because I was told that it should have been more than that. Now, when that also happened, the council that was in charge at that time continued to ask the controller to do the work, but they didn't want to pay him. So he surcharged him under the rates at the time, which would be as a, since there was no controller, as an auditor, for $7,000 that was never paid to him. Now, when you asked us for money for our garbage fees, we had to pay them or take a lien against our house. So I just want you to know, I think that you should either pay him, or if the vote did not meet the borough code, you must put the controller position back on the ballot. And then, since it wasn't legal, you could negotiate with him for lesser money. All right, I have another question. Mr. Parker, you're on the school board, borough, whatever it is, association. Can you look into if there's anything that can be done about the high taxes from the school system? Because it's overpowering for a lot of the public, and we're losing more of the people owning their own houses all the time. And lastly, I'm interested in finding out whether there's any possibility, there's parts of Rutland Road that are so bad where I live, that my car, I had to pay $600 last year to have it all fixed and aligned. I'm wondering, is there anything can be done with that road? I talked to the road crew guy today, and he said he can look into it. But I understand it is not on the roads list for this year. So even if you can get a partial done where that road is so torn up, I would really appreciate it because it's just destroying our cars down there. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Courtney Rains Lou. I said that right? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I was told to lower this a little bit. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Courtney Rains Lou at 327 Hillside Avenue. First of all, well, I just wanted to say, if you don't know who I am, myself and my Christian band rock, right to become, inquired to the Borough Council if we could clean up Mar, and we, with your approval, named the former dyke, the Morrisville Riverwalk. And I just wanted to thank each one of you for allowing us to go up there and clean and being so incredibly supportive. So that's a thank you to each one of you. We're all so thankful. Just to let you know, there's a lot of teenagers involved, and some of the councilmen, Dave Nay and Justin Bowers, have come up and helped us, and Debbie Smith and the rest of you have been very supportive. So big thanks to you for that. We received our first letter from Mary Lou and Eric White. I don't know them, but I would like to publicly thank them. They sent a letter to Borough Council thanking us for cleaning up the Morrisville Riverwalk, and they gave a check for $100 to Morrisville Borough to help clean up the boroughs. They actually said, could I take the teenagers to breakfast? But I can do that, and we would like to put the money right back up onto the Morrisville Riverwalk. And a few of you know that we have asked for trash cans up there, beautiful, like you would see on the boardwalk, that trash cans that will stay up there and not fall into the river and can handle weather. That is our desire because we clean up there, and then there aren't trash cans up there and people just litter it again. So I would like to see if we could put this $100 towards trash cans. And so you can take that, I don't know who would be responsible, Scott or Debbie. Scott, okay, so we would like to donate this back to you. And then, if it's okay with you, maybe there could be a donation box at the borough for the Riverwalk for trash cans. So that's just something that I thought, that I would ask, that you would consider. And the next cleanup, we do it the first Saturday of every month, and the next one is the first Saturday in April at 10:00 a.m. We'll be down at the pavilion, the stage area, and we will go up and clean again. And we've been up there three times already, even in some rain and bad weather, but we still have been up there anyway. So, but I just wanted to thank you all so much for allowing this to go forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for your group, for all the work that they've been doing up there for quite a few months. Any funds that are donated in would go through the Borough Manager. We would have to set that aside in a, in a special line for it, so that we know that's what that would be, your donations we designated for.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss it with him. But thank you.
You're welcome. And does he have the check? I think I just have a copy of it. So you have the check then.
Yes. Thank you very much, Courtney.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work.
Next one is Noel Sperry. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Noel Sperry. I live at 531 Prospect Avenue, right here in Morrisville. I just want to say, I've been noticing that there's been a lot of work been going on recently with the tot lot down in Williamson Park and the ADA curbs and construction that's going on at Patriots Park. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done to get us this far. And I just want to keep encouraging you to keep Morrisville moving forward. One thing I would like the council to focus on more going forward is looking at projects and programs to attract more businesses and ways to revitalize our downtown and our areas that can actually bring in more people to make this a much better place for families. Again, thank you very much, and that's about it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. And next is Kurt Holt Hendricks. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Evening, Kurt Holt Hendricks, 300 Melvin Avenue North. Just want to bring up some things that Noel said, too. It's great to see the money coming into the borough through the grants, the work being done by the engineers with Scott, council supporting that work. It's important for this borough. We're not rich, and anything that can come back in, the tot lot, the future playground work, Patriots Park, it's all things that will enhance everyone's lives, their home values, and it's just great to see. What's not great to see is still more wasted money over petty arguments, solicitor fees, pushing for possible more judicial oversight, for possible argument that can be settled in-house without bringing in solicitor. Wasting money over petty arguments, over who is in charge of who, doesn't help anyone, doesn't help the borough. He's not going to look up because it's him. We got to stop that stuff. That type of arguing, wasting of the money, it doesn't help our town. You can disagree, you don't have to waste our money over lawyer fees with your disagreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
John Pastore, 25 Dieter Avenue. I was kind of disturbed that there wasn't any mention of the five people that lost their lives at the apartments in a moment of silence. My big question on that and big concern is, where's our code enforcement with that? We really got to get down to the rental properties and start enforcing that. And I know it's going to cost a lot of money, but it could have potentially saved lives. There was, God knows how many people living in that apartment. We got to get on these rental properties and start going through them, and people's got to sign in who lives there. So if you do check and people are living there that shouldn't live there, these things could be prevented. I'm still against cutting the police force, and I've asked before, how much money are we saving by cutting that officer? Can anybody answer that? One officer. He was the truck enforcement officer, and talking to him, he pretty much offsets his salary with the fines that come back into the town. What happens, and what are our costs going to be once those fines are exhausted and we're not collecting any, any money to offset his salary? What else do we have? I'm glad they didn't waste the money on 9D. I got to watch that on TV the other day. I don't know really how I feel there. It's good to help the community, but to make a holiday and make those people work, we don't own that building, we don't rent it, lease it. I don't know why we did it. I mean, it was a good thing to do, but it's a lot of money. You know, there's a lot of other things that could be done in the borough with the roads department and all the people that work in the office. I went on social media for the second time and Googled it up and saw all the pictures, and I didn't see anybody devoted to make those people work, go and work there. Not one person or other than Scott was there painting and cleaning, and that's disappointing. I mean, this is your election year, and I looked at that site, and there's all the good things you guys are doing, but you guys weren't there. I wish we could reconsider putting the truck enforcement back on the road. Eileen, you ran your campaign on truck safety, you voted against it. That was a lie to every person that lives in our ward. We don't have enough police officers. Mr. Jaeger said that people think we have too many police officers. I've never seen one person come up here and say, we have too many police officers.
Sorry.
Is that my timer?
Yeah, I hit the wrong button. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I was trying to shut it off. I'm sorry.
I'd like to get us back with truck safety. It's something we got to look into. You know, I live on those streets that we complain about. Not good.
That wasn't mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Berger. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. On your action items, 9A, I hope the council will move forward and vote to become part of the new enterprise zone. As was explained, the original zone was just industrial, and obviously Toll Brothers and Staley would not be new small business. That would be in need of small economic loans. And as you know, several years ago, with the chance to go into an expanded one, the council at that time decided not to go forward with it. Since this is now a new cycle for the enterprise zone, you're beginning at square one, and I hope that you will be a part of this. This is a tool in the toolbox that can help small businesses. It provides loans that are tied to hiring full-time employees with benefits, and we have a lot of small businesses. So as someone had spoke to encourage businesses in the town, we don't know the number of businesses that could use it, but certainly it's something that we need to have available as we want to move forward with economic development. And I saw on the agenda for this evening that a part-time officer is going to be hired this evening, and I believe the last month or two, there was another part-time officer that was recently hired. So it seems to me that you've got the number of hours for a full-time police department as was before. So I thank you all for making sure that we have all of our police chiefs covered 24/7, and someone will explain, please. I believe that allows time for the truck enforcement as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Crotto. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Crotto, 473 Hamilton Boulevard. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wish to inquire about the recent council authorized approved Volunteer Day, where the entire borough was shut down on February 18th, 2019, President's Day. My understanding is numerous 15 to 20 borough employees, managers, worked at the local YMCA[1168.33][1168.33]/ Habitat for Humanity building owned by the Catholic Church here in town. All three of the organizations are nonprofit 501(c)(3), and one entity is a well-known Christian religious foundation. My understanding is if a borough employee didn't want to participate in this Volunteer Day, they would be forced to take a day of sick leave or a vacation day. It is also my understanding that all of those borough employees who agreed to participate in the Volunteer, participate in the Volunteer Day were paid a regular day of salary. President's Day is not a negotiated formally or formally recognized holiday per the negotiated union contract, nor the borough. Yet all borough employees were paid a full day of taxpayer-paid salary to work for the three non-government, nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations previously cited. Here are my questions. Who authorized the closing of Borough Hall and these borough employees to be paid a full day's salary at taxpayer expense to service the three non-government entities? Under what legal authority did the person or persons authorize this? Assuming there is no legal authority, who is responsible for returning the illegal use of taxpayer funds used to pay the borough staff for this Volunteer Day that has resulted in a cost of thousands of dollars to the taxpayer? In reviewing a few news articles and pictures from the Intelligencer newspaper and our Borough Council portal, I learned that our borough employees painted things, cleaned old tape-off windows, and cleaned what appears to be old insulated pipes in an old building that serves 137 children and their families with pre-kindergarten and daycare. Do we know if the insulation around these old pipes had asbestos sealed within? Were our borough employees given proper training and personal protective equipment, PPE? Where did air, or did air quality samples take place prior to this cleaning, during the cleaning, and after? Were there any injuries to our borough staff resulting in workman's comp during this Volunteer Day? Who is personally responsible for any, all expenses incurred above and beyond the taxpayer funds already used to pay their salaries during this Volunteer Day? Government employees are strongly encouraged to volunteer their personal time to help all nonprofits. However, it should never be at taxpayer expense. We have a borough manager who should have known better, in my opinion. We have a finance director who should have known better, again, in my opinion. We have a borough man, excuse me. We have a solicitor attorney that is supposed to guide members of council in situations like this so we avoid what appears to be a multitude of violations, reckless use of authority, and who knows what expense to the taxpayer. Members of council, while I do not hold you, while I do not expect you to know all the ins and outs on borough code, civil law, and criminal law, I will hold you accountable to take appropriate actions on these recent actions I have cited up here tonight immediately to ensure the taxpayers never subjected to these extreme liabilities in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Crotto.
I can't finish?
Well, you're up to four minutes. It's run afire everybody else. Do you have much more to go? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak freely.
Thank you very much.
I think my point is clear. Just one thing, because I'm going to send you an upset personal guidance for volunteer reasons.
Thank you. You got my email, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Pardon me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you address any there?
No.
That's it. Okay, at this time, we're going to close public comment. Going to move on to the regular part of the meeting. Approval of the minutes. We have minutes from January 22nd, February 12th, February 19th. If it so pleases the council, if you have any that you don't want to do all at the same time, we can vote these in a block unless I hear anyone say against it. Consensus is. Not hearing anything against that, then, I would ask for a motion to approve all three of these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Next, we'll go to the finance. You had your finance report this past week. Is there anyone has any questions about the finance report that they've received? Not hearing any questions about that. We're going to move then to the motion to approve the bills and the bill list and pay the bills. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowell?
Yes.
Councilman Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilman Trump?
Yes.
Councilman Larson?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. We'll move on to reports, and we'll have the manager's report, please.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I do have a few items I'd like to address this evening, and they actually will fit right in with a lot of the comments from public comment. I'd like to acknowledge that Chief McClay for working during patrol hours that are not filled, one such day was Super Bowl Sunday. It was my understanding that a couple of the council members bumped into him while he was on duty that day patrolling and responding to calls. But I imagine a lot of our residents don't know that Chief McClay actually fills in to ensure that there are two officers on the street at all times. The chief and I have expressed concerns to the council and the manager that the 30-hour cap for the part-time officers would make it almost impossible to cover the streets. I get no pleasure from reporting that that is the case. With summer months ahead, I have a concern, the chief and I both actually shared this concern, that some shifts may go unfulfilled. On a similar note, related to the full-time officer that was terminated back in December due to budgetary cuts, if anyone tells you that he was only reassigned, and that he is now working 30 hours a week, or that it's only 10 hours a week difference, you're being lied to. The full-time officer was terminated. He received a termination letter. I have a copy. He was then hired as a part-time officer. I can tell you that I do review the logs that come in after patrol shifts. The logs contain the names of the officers that work the streets, information of other officers, if they called out sick, left early, and the officer that would fill in. I can tell you that I actually honestly do not recall seeing Officer Zumpaner's name on any patrol log since being terminated as a full-time officer and being hired as part-time. So he's clearly not working the 30 hours a week. I'd also like to address the day of service. There's been a great deal of misleading, untrue information put out at my expense by the political servants, surrogates, and from Councilman Jaeger about that day of service. And I'll explain, even though it was at my expense, these comments, it was actually at your expense to taxpayers. The first draft of the agenda for this meeting, the preliminary agenda, I was saying that the first draft of the agenda for this evening included a motion authorizing the solicitor to pursue legal actions to remedy a personal dispute with the mayor. Sometime before the meeting, a motion was removed from that agenda. I have no idea who put that motion or prompted that motion to be put on there or to remove it. But I was sent some papers from Facebook where Councilman Jaeger is telling people it's the mayor who was asking for this to be litigated, which is a lie. I have it.
Mr. Jaeger, please. The mayor has the floor.
Well, I can read that if you want. I have it in my folder. But anyway, I'm just clarifying that I know at no time, let me find my place, asked this council to take me to court. While discussing the day of service with Mr. Mitchell through emails, it was he, Mr. Mitchell, who brought the solicitor into the conversation, even though I expressed I didn't want added expenses. Once again, what is being attempted and being put out there is what I call attempted political assassination or character assassination. The whole position or platform about this regarding me was made up and put out there. And I have no doubt that as I continue to read, more comments and bullying about what I'm going to say next will be out on social network. Regarding the day of service itself, there was a lack of transparency given to me about the details of the event for which my department was expected to participate. I found that surprising. I wasn't even given a list of employees that were told that they had to report to the YMCA for the day. I found out from a different source that Chief McClay's name was on it, along with the two MPD secretaries, and that the offices would be shut down on President's Day, even though they had been opened in the past. As that day approached, I reached out to our manager for clarity to express my concerns, and to say that the manager, in my opinion, was more than difficult is an understatement. I explained that I had safety concerns over denying the public access to the MPD window on that day, which is normally open. on that day, which is normally open. I questioned the use of tax dollars in the form of labor to be donated to a nonprofit. Although strong-arm tactics have no impact on me, because of this, I was bullied and threatened. I was threatened with retaliation if I would not cooperate. The manager said he would reassign the MPD secretaries. I explained that I had safety concerns over shutting down the police department to the public, and I questioned what I believe was a misuse of tax dollars in the form of labor being donated to the nonprofit. I could not look away. I felt obligated since I felt this tax dollars was being illegally used because it was being done at taxpayer expense. The manager is considered many to be the CEO of this borough, and as direct employers, I believe that it may benefit our community if council seeks a new manager. I am requesting that the process be started this evening by terminating his employment. I also believe councils should consider finding a new borough solicitor. Council has not been informed that unauthorized expenditures or unfavorable position of agreeing such could place them in, but instead, we were charged $165 to defend the manager's directive ordering employees to work for a nonprofit while on the clock. For me, boroughs giving to a charity isn't something that I'm unfamiliar with. It came up several years ago. Maybe, actually, maybe Ms. Berger recalls because it was a long time ago. But back then, I asked the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs about giving donations to nonprofits. I was told neither in the Borough Code nor the PA Constitution authorizes municipalities to give money to nonprofits other than those stated in the municipal code, being the volunteer fire companies, volunteer ambulance squads, libraries, et cetera, and that any official who votes to do so can be surcharged for unauthorized expenditure. Prior to the day of service, looking through Borough Code, I found nothing authorizing council to give to the YMCA. However, I did find Section 1059.3, defined surcharges as the amount of any imbalance or shortage of an expenditure of any kind made in a manner prohibited or not authorized by statute which causes financial loss to the borough shall be surcharged against the officer who made the balance or shortage shall appear by vote or neglect it, permit it, or approve the expenditure. I am requesting that the appropriate steps be taken to ensure the borough manager and council president fiscally reimburse the taxpayers for the full amount that was taken from the general fund to pay the borough employees their total package, not just hourly rate for a mandatory eight-hour workday on President's Day 2019. I am disappointed that a full-time officer was terminated due to budget cuts, yet the borough's finance director gave council no guidance about giving away thousands of dollars in tax dollars, which appears to be an unauthorized expenditure. I am sorry for the length of my report. However, I thought it was important that people don't rely on Facebook propaganda and hear it directly from me. The situation is not about volunteering. My family has been volunteering locally for decades. I wholeheartedly support helping out when possible. It's not about the YMCA or Habitat for Humanity. Both are wonderful and positive organizations, and we are fortunate to have them here in our community. And lastly, I'd like to end my report by congratulating and sending best wishes to Lisa Costillo and Ed Welch, and thank them for allowing me to be part of their wedding ceremony right here at Borough Hall yesterday. That is the extent of my report.
Well, in that whole report that you gave, with all due respect to you, Mayor Ravello, there was a couple of things you brought up that were actually safety issues, but you took that amount of time on a business meeting to chastise the council about something that you knew was given to the council back during the budget time in October, one has voted and didn't say a word of opposition to it until four days before it took place. That's all I'm going to say on that this time. Okay. Virginia, councilperson. Garrett Foy has her report. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Coming up in the spring, on April 4th, me and two other seniors will be attending Senator Tom Linsen's Be a Senator for a Day at Bucks County Technical High School. I'm going to be placed in a group of high school students from across the state and see what life as a senator is like, and also vote on fake bills. The experience from attending the council meetings are definitely going to help me while I'm there. And then also coming up this week is my school's visitation day, so any students who are interested in attending, Conwillian can come for the entire day to see what a day is like at our school. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Garrett. Okay, we're going to move on to the action items. 9A, it's a call for a motion to authorize the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to begin the process of expanding the boundaries of the enterprise zone within the Marshville Borough.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Eileen, you motioned it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Jaeger, your second, correct. Okay. Anyone have any questions on this motion? Explained at our budget meeting what this was for the enterprise zone?
The meeting.
Does council want me to read any part of this so you all understand all this, correct?
We vetted it pretty well at the agenda meeting.
Okay, all right. All right, then, I will have a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
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 Motion passes eight-zero.
And I will add that I wasn't here for the agenda, but I did watch the meeting, so I got caught up.
Thank you. And you got all that in your packet, I believe, too, correct?
Right, yep.
Yeah, we talked about it. Actually, we had the presentation. I think you were here for the presentation there with your DA.
The evening before, yep.
Okay, correct. Thank you. Let me move us down. Okay. Next motion is 9B, call for motion to authorize the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to create a LERTA district within Marshville Borough.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Can I just, again, I know I asked this at the agenda meeting, but just for clarification purposes, we're going to get something from the redevelopment authority that basically lays out the parameters of what this is going to entail, correct? It's not just a blank check for them to come in and say?
No, they will have to present something back to council. You'll have to enact the enabling legislation to do it.
Okay.
As will the school district and the county.
Right.
So that the council will have a chance to see that exact boundaries, correct, before they make a final decision about it? Okay. Any other questions on this motion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Yeh.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. 9C, call for motion authorizing emergency roof repairs to the public library estimated at $18,700 plus an additional $3.50 per square foot for any damaged wood replacement needed. Have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this motion?
Are we going to put a cap on this?
I think you weighed in on that, right, Scott? They gave you a pretty close estimate. I think we were saying, hopefully, it's not going to be more than $20,000. If it would be more, he would definitely come back, but until they get the tiles off.
Yeah. They won't know how much.
Yeah, they were pretty good at after-maintenance, though.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions on this? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. 9D, call for motion to award 2019-2020 consortium road material bid, ask bid for the Bucks County Consortium to Highway LLC, contract to run from April 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? This is something we standardly do every year. We do all our stuff through the consortium. I think we said this was road materials. Okay, can I? Right? Okay.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. 9E, call for motion to authorize the appropriate borough officials to execute the revised contract with the Marshville Police Association.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? I think everyone got this in their packet. We all knew what it was. Could we have a roll call, please, when you're ready, Virginia?
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Yeh?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Can I just ask, who moved and seconded that one? Do we have that?
I moved, I believe Mr. Jaeger seconded.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. 9F, call for motion authorizing Marshville Borough to participate in the Bucks County Department of Health 2019 mosquito control program and to treat municipal properties from mosquito control. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
That's a second.
Got a motion and a second, yeah. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Just wanted to make a comment just for the public that this is only if there's a problem with West Nile found in the borough, correct, your manager?
I believe they do the testing annually and treat some municipal properties annually. In fact, we posted some information on the county's 2019 mosquito control program on the website last week, if anybody wants to read up on it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9G, call for motion to approve the hiring of a part-time police officer, Officer Jason Saussiere, hope I said that right, to fill the vacant part-time position in the Marshville Police Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. He was motion, yeah, Mr. May. And Mr. Jaeger was the second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Congratulations to Officer Jason Saussiere to become part of our police department. Motion 9H, call for motion to authorize the engineer to submit an application for CDBG funding to the Bucks County Housing Department of Housing and Community Development for installation of new ADA ramps surrounding the municipal building and ambulance building. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Quick question. For 9H and 9J, do we have any dollar amounts regarding the application or any cost involved with the application of either of these? Not saying that we don't need the ramps, especially around Borough Hall. I can see how bad it is, but since we're voting.
Well, what you're voting on is a resolution authorizing us to apply. We will have the applications in a future packet when they're finished and submitted.
Okay, but the application does cost money to apply, doesn't it?
Oh, yes, yes. And at a previous meeting, council reached a consensus on which applications it wished to apply for for the spring season, and those are the ones being applied for.
Well, this is, I don't believe either, well, 9H is not an existing one. I think the consensus we came to was based on existing grants, new grants. If you remember, we deferred giving an answer to the engineer during the night of the presentation because there was no, there were no financial, there was no financial information being provided for us to base that go-ahead for.
Right. I believe subsequent information was provided to the council after that, and then there was a lengthy discussion at a previous council meeting about the five possible applications for the spring season, and there was a consensus among council to authorize the borough engineer to submit applications one through four that were on that list, and this is three of those four applications.
But we do not have a cost for the application at this time.
I believe that was estimated in the subsequent information that came from the borough engineer and was distributed to council in a prior distribution.
See, Mr. Bowers nodding.
Yeah, we had a whole discussion on this. I believe it was actually six grants because number six was to do with summer seat, and we kind of had a consensus that because we don't own that or have any.
That was the fifth one.
Okay, yeah, that was number five.
Yes, council authorized one through four.
So all the other grant projects did have an estimate of the cost.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I just ask why we didn't have H-I-N-J on our agenda for the agenda meeting?
Because we didn't have them from the engineer until, I think, Thursday.
But we don't have a cost from them for this.
We do. I believe they submitted information subsequent to their presentation about what estimated cost would be. That was distributed to council previously. In fact, I believe it was distributed to council ahead of our discussion where we reached a consensus on applications one through four. I'll get hands on it if you'd like, and we'll include it in your packets again this week.
It was in the March 2019 Engineers' Report.
Yeah, all of these were.
Okay, if that was on the last engineer's grant summary, that's, I'm fine with that.
Yes, just to approve these.
Okay.
These are the, actual vote for it now. He asked to have these approved first. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I'll have a roll call, please, Virginia, on this 9H.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Yeh?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9I, call for motion to authorize the engineer to submit an application for CDBG funding to the Bucks County Housing Department of Housing and Community Development for certain Phase II construction of playground improvements at Williamson Park. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
She can be a move, and he's the second.[1675.71] Any questions or comments on this motion? Everyone also got the information on this and this Phase Two, if we get it. And when you're ready, Virginia, can do a roll call.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Motion nine J. Call for motion to authorize the engineer to submit an application for CDBG funding to the Bucks County Housing Department of Housing and Community Development for installation of new ADA ramps surrounding the summer seat and stark building and demolished M.R. Ryder Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? I will just say the first part of this that was done, actually being done on Hillcrest looks really nice. If anyone has a chance to go down there and see the work, they're doing some really good work down there. It's coming along really great. Okay, we'll have a roll call, Virginia, whenever you're ready.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yack?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Motion nine K. Call for motion to designate an official voting delegate, an alternate delegate for the 108th General Assembly of Boroughs, June 9th to the 12th, 2019. Designated voting delegate is appointed for the purpose of electing the officers of the association and voting on proposed resolutions and policies. Can I have a motion and a
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? I think everyone knows. I guess it comes down to who's actually going. It'll be you, Mr. Yeager.
I'm definitely going.
Councilwoman Drysbaum, myself, Ms. Larson. Anyone else signed up to go that we know of? Mr. Bowers, you weren't sure?
Yeah, I haven't signed up yet.
Okay. So out of those people that are going, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be me, it can be whatever nomination you want to put up, whoever wants to go, it doesn't matter to me whatsoever.
I'll nominate Danielle Larison.
For the, okay. And then we need the alternate delegate.
We need to vote on that?
Uh, yes, you have to have an alternate, yep. So Ms. Larson.
Mr. Yeager.
Mr. Yeager? All right. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Get opposed? Okay. Be Ms. Larson, as our voting delegate, our alternate, with Mr. Yeager at the conference. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into appointments for the library board. I explained beginning of the year, there were several people that applied in December, several came in after that. We moved all of them to March 1st because that's according to bylaws when they get voted. So actually, on the motion we have tonight, it will be, it will actually read to expire on 3/1/22, according to what their bylaws are. It doesn't matter when the meeting happens, in the March of whatever the year is, they stay in those positions until the motion is voted for them, but according to their bylaws, they always expire on the 1st. So if everyone's okay with that, I've made that change for that. Okay, how I'm going to do this, since there's five people that have sent in letters, there's three positions, I'm going to ask for one seat at a time. I'll take one nomination, we'll do a round of an up or down vote, yes or no. They get the majority of the vote, they're in that seat. Then we'll take another nomination, so it's not confusing for everyone.
I nominate Constance Bedell.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Constance Bedell. Beetle?
Is that Bedell? Be- Beetle?
Beetle.
Okay. So we will take, the nomination is for Constance Beetle, and we will take a roll call vote, yes or no? Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yack?
Yes.
Eight is the vote for that, so congratulations to Constance Beetle, and she will take one of those positions on our library board. There's a second seat now, we will do, and I will take a nomination for that seat.
I'd like to nominate Megan
I'm sorry.
Megan Madonka.
Megan Madonka, okay. Nomination is for Megan Madonka, and I will ask for an up or down vote, yes or no, on the council. Whenever you're ready, Virginia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yack?
Yes.
Motion passes by eight votes. Congratulations to Megan Madonka, and welcome to the library board. We have one more position available, and I'll take a motion, I mean, I'm sorry, nomination for that.
I'd like to nominate Bruce Stevens.
Okay. Nomination is for Bruce Stevens. Take an up or down vote, yes or no? This seat. Thank you, Virginia.
Councilwoman Dowler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman May?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yack?
Yes.
That's eight votes. Congratulations to Bruce Stevens, and welcome to our library board appointment. I will take care of this appointment for tonight. Thank you very much, everyone. I think, Virginia, you send them letters, right, letting them know? Thank you very much. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. And also, we can now, I guess, officially update our roster for the, for the council. Thank you. Okay. We're going to, we don't have any unfinished business unless you want to speak about the sign first, or you want to talk about our
The newsletter and the sign.
Okay. Let's do the sign first. Everyone received in their packet this week, we
This calls on controversy.
Oh, stop, stop. We only got two choices. Actually, first we'll let everyone know that we've been very honored to be given a bless you. Our engineering company and the Marshville Business Association are donating two welcome signs to Marshville Borough to replace the two that are not in the best shape. One will be down by the Marshville Shopping Center, you'll see a blue gold one down there, wooden one. The other one will be coming across the Calhoun Street Bridge on Trenton Ave. and Delmore. We, you all got in your packet two same signs. I don't know if everyone can see this little design that's there. It's
Looks exactly like the one that's
Yeah.
out here on either side.
Yeah, I think, I think the sculpturing on the side, instead of being squared off, is a little, is a little fancier. This one here is the green, you can't see it, but it's got a burgundy stripe around the outer edge, it's got the summer seat logo on it. These are the, the colors that are the landmark town colors that you'll find on the library sign that's there, you'll find that on the dog park sign that's there, and the two that are on the borough property here. The other one that came to everyone is, is same color that's there now, which is a blue and a gold. So the only thing we have to do is let them know which color that the council is going to, to go with. So we'll, I need a consensus on that.
Me personally, I like the green sticking with the four other signs that we have.
Yep.
Everything to be consistent.
Okay.
It'll look a lot nicer.
And, and the lettering pops better on the green, too. I mean, it just looks nice.
This is hard to see, it almost looks black when I printed it out, but when you see it, it's actually a nice, nice shade of green, and it does match the landmark towns. I personally, for myself, that's what I like. And the other one, like I said, was a blue and a gold writing. So I'm going to take a consensus so far. Corinne, do you have a preference on? The blue? Mr. May?
I like them both equally, but I think we should stick with, you know, the ones that match the other ones in town.
The ones in town. It's you, one, two, three. Mr. Parker?
I agree, I'd like to stick with the signs that are existing.
Landmark towns. I think we do summer seat, we'll probably stay with the same color scheme because we are one of the landmark town, towns from that group. We'll go with the, the green.
Did you go all the way down?
Yeah, I mean, already said yes, and Mike said yes.
Green it is?
Yeah, green will be the sign. Thank you. And thank you to the Business Association and to Gilmore Associates for donating those signs, that's very nice. Okay, the other thing we have, everyone got, when did this come in? Couple weeks ago? You put it in everybody's packet, the newsletter?
Yeah, three or four weeks ago.
Three or four weeks ago. Council didn't weigh in on this, but we meant to bring it up during the agenda meeting if you wanted to say anything about it. Mr. Mitchell had talked about doing a newsletter when he first came here last year. Finding the time to do it is, is tough. Mr. Bowers started putting something together, sent it over to me. It actually is a nice format. The borough used to do a newsletter that actually got mailed to everyone's house years ago called Do You Know? And a lot of people remember that, and it used to have informational stuff on there besides, you know, trash pickup day, but whatever else that the borough wanted to let you know. And then that newsletter, for whatever reason, had stopped being done. So we thought it might be a nice idea to do that. Some towns do a newsletter, the school district did one for a while. So we thought we would attempt it. We were not, this is the, the first one. We'd like to put it up on the borough website so that you could download it and, and see the information on there. I will thank Mr. Bowers, he, he's much more better on the computer doing this sort of stuff than I would ever be. There's some nice pictures in there that shows an aerial shot of, I think it's Williamson Park, actually, it's our front building. We've got the summer seat, you'll see an aerial shot of the, what we're working on up there. Talks a little bit about where we were in 2018 and some of the things, and where we're looking to move on to into 2019. So it's kind of an informational letter about everything the borough's been doing. So we're going to give it a test run and see what everyone thinks about it. Years ago, I believe I heard that they used to get some of the businesses to donate advertisement on the last couple pages of the back page in order to, to pay for it. That's how they paid for it to be distributed to the homes. Maybe we could look into actually seeing if they would want to do that and be able to eventually do that. We can get some of them down to like our library, about Borough Hall's table out there, but just a way of getting some information out to the public. So do the council have a chance to take a look at this? Nobody is
I did.
Okay? Anybody?
I looked at it. When are we looking to do it?
Whenever you, yeah, whenever you guys are ready to, to put it up. I think they made this, we moved it from January into February. I think the one before they, when they did it, it might have been once a year they did it. We could all attempt to, there's a lot of work put in it, so maybe we can try doing it twice a year, if not at least once a year. But it's, it's a nice informational thing. It also has all the contact information for people that aren't up on the internet, that want to know all the representatives and phone numbers, and it gives information about our rescue squad in there and the change of our rescue squad. So, and some of the projects and the, the grants and stuff that we've been working on. So it's just a really nice informational newsletter. So we're, thought we'd see how that would go. Okay, is there any, anything else under Borough officials that anyone wants to speak about or announcements that you need?
I'd, I'd like the floor, Madam President. Wow. So where to begin? So I heard a lot tonight, there were a lot of words used. I, I'm finding in my tenure, which is fairly short up here, that when I hear people start saying that other people are spreading misinformation, it's usually a cue for you've said something they don't like. There's been a couple things said tonight, I'm not going to say I don't like them, but they weren't accurate. And I will say that my sentiment of not wanting to waste money on piles of paper is going to continue. Every time we make phone calls to the solicitor's office to settle petty disputes, we are investing in piles of paper. A piece of paper that you use in your printer costs about a penny until you make the solicitor put hours of work into it. We need to stop doing that. I, I did speak about the impending potential vote that we were going to have tonight, and what I said was that we were being forced into it. When somebody doesn't relent, you're forcing us, you're forcing our hand, because you're going to continue without, without any cause to actually continue to charge us for services we just don't need right now, to settle a petty argument or dispute. I will speak just for a second on the day of service, because I, I'm a big advocate of service to the community. And I heard a lot about not giving charities money, and that didn't happen. I heard, I heard a little bit about whose responsibility it was. This council voted on that schedule, it was clearly delineated in that schedule, and it passed eight to zero. Just want to make sure I'm clear on that. I'm a huge advocate on helping the community. I think it was a fantastic thing that was done by all parties that were involved, and it's a shame that it's being sullied over a, an argument that, by the way, from what I'm learning, continues to pop up year after year after year. So it's not an issue of one event, it's something that keeps coming up year after year after year, and we spend money on it, then it goes away for a while, and then it pops back up when we feel like it. We've got to stop doing those things. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, I don't know what that year after year is. This is the first that the police department has ever attempted to be shut down, that's why I brought it up. The comment that I was referring to, and I'm going to read it now, was, I mean, quote, "You must be confused in not understanding the situation. Council members aren't the ones asking for this to be litigated to define police force. The mayor is." That's what I was referring to. That never happened. I was actually the one who actually brought up not bringing the solicitor in. I agree about, I've been the one that's saying, the solicitor charges us a lot of money. I didn't bring him in, I didn't pursue it, I talked to the Mayor's Association, that didn't cost the taxpayers a dime, unlike the thousands of dollars of unauthorized labor that went to a nonprofit. And that, I'm not going to argue this, that's my point, I feel strongly about it. Everyone feels strongly, whatever their position is. And I just think that it needed to be addressed because of the misinformation, that's all.
And I, and if I may, Madam President, taking one comment on a stringed conversation is out of context, and it was about forcing our hand into doing it. I, I'll say it again, you were, you were unrelenting in your, in your pursuit of this, of this argument. That's what that comment is about. So again, we could take things out of context, or we could take them for what they are. There was no misinformation being put out there, there was just the information as it stood. Again, you can take one line and put it out of context however you like, but the, but the guts of the conversation is, and was, and still will be, we have to stop investing in piles of paper. Thank you.
Okay, we
Madam President?
Sure, absolutely.
The only thing I would add to this is, our office was contacted by the Mayor's Association. My understanding is, at the request of Mayor Ravella, who initiated several requests for information which goes well beyond the scope of what was at issue at the time, including labor agreements. The Mayor's Association then sent a position paper essentially relying on a case that I knew they would cite, in support of a position that really didn't go as far as what they were asserting in this particular instance, which basically demanded a response from us. That, that letter was sent directly to our office by counsel for the Mayor's Association. So we responded in kind, did the research, and that was how we were sort of brought into it. But it was very much an issue that sort of was being pressed at the time by the Mayor's Association, most likely at Mayor Ravella's request, although it may be a larger issue the association is pursuing, who knows?
Okay.
But certainly, you recall the email from the Borough Solicitor that said it's time to bring the Borough Solicitor in? That happened well before, he was the one that brought you in, sir.
Mayor Ravella, I think we've just beat this dead horse here quite a bit. What it comes down to is we've had an issue as to who has control over a couple of those secretaries that are under the ASME, all these secretaries are under the ASME contract, you of course got to be sponsored from the ASME contract, officials about that also. So when we're put in that kind of a position, we really legally have to make sure that everyone is protected no matter what, so that's why that got to the point that it was. I understand your position on that, you understand our position on that, I think at this point we're at a stalemate, we just hope this isn't going to go any further, to waste anymore at this point. You said your comments, we said ours, I think we need to drop it at this point.
I concur, we should drop it, however, let's see what the Attorney General's Office has to say.
Oh, then it's going further, thank you. Anyone else have any other comments?
Madam President, I have two questions for Mr. Mayor, if he would, based on your report. One is, during a normal holiday, say Christmas or Thanksgiving, is when the Borough Hall is closed, is the police window open?
I don't understand why you're asking about normal holidays, we were referring to the President's Day.
Because I'm referring to you saying that the police department was closed like it was the first time ever, is it closed during holidays as well?
No, let me clarify, it was the first time on President's Day that the Borough wanted the window shut.
Okay, so there are other days of the year where the Borough's closed and the public can't access the window?
Yes, they're advertised at regular holidays.
Okay, and my second question is, did I hear you correctly in saying that we have hired a part-time officer that can work up to 30 hours, that does not work any hours?
Well, you did hear that, however, I did not say he doesn't work any, I said he's not covering the streets. I would not be surprised to find that he is still cleaning up court cases, but to say he's out there working 30 hours, he's absolutely not.
Who's fault's that?
Anyone else have any other?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
ingsa Chief's still here, and John Pasture's still here. I have two questions, I just need yes or no answers on. Is Officer Luna still working for us? Chief?
I'm allowed to speak?
Yeah.
I'm never allowed to speak.
Oh, here we go.
But he is assigned as a patrol officer now, and does not specialize in just truck patrol.
But is he doing truck patrols well?
No.
He's not doing any?
He will pull a truck over, but you don't understand what a truck patrol officer is.
Because I've seen him sitting down in the end of Philadelphia Avenue, that's why I'm asking, I imagine he's sitting there because of the trucks.
Is there a question there, ma'am?
Is that why he's there?
It's part of his patrol, his sector is on that side of the.
But there wouldn't be any other reason for him to be sitting there?
It's his sector over there, so I guess that's why he's there.
And that's where the trucks are, correct?
Trucks are all over town, ma'am, but you understand that there was a patrol officer being a truck patrol officer? You should be wearing a microphone, like you're.
When you laid off a police officer, being Gary Zappana, who is now collecting unemployment, the reason why he is not here, and we are paying for unemployment?
Excuse me, sir, she asked you about Officer Luna.
Well, we're going, so this is how we got to where Officer Luna is.
That's why I said yes or no answer.
She just wants to know about Officer Luna.
Officer Luna was taken off a truck patrol, that's the only thing he did, he did not answer radio calls. So he was in a different uniform.
Yeah.
You see him now, is he in a dress uniform, like we all, the rest of us are? You cannot crawl underneath trucks with that uniform. So will he pull a truck over just to check out the paperwork? Absolutely, just like any other officer can. But he's not specializing in trucks anymore. He's working the 12-hour shift, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, working the three on, three off, so he's not working trucks anymore, no he's not.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We'll have two part-time officers to fill that position.
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that the previous career day that was scheduled for, oh, okay.
Another question, ma'am?
We still have, we just have hired recently two new officers, part-time, that can actually do what he's doing, correct?
No, we cannot, not by law. Number one, he's the only certified truck officer that we have.
No, I don't mean the truck officer, I mean, he could still be a truck officer, and the other two part-timers could do the job that he's doing.
Not unless you want a problem with the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board, you cannot.
How is that going to be?
Because we laid off a police officer. Okay, you cannot use part-time officers to fill their shifts. We explained that when we went through this. We cannot do that. It will be a problem with the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board. And if you want to, your solicitor will tell you that. The scheduling wouldn't allow it, you got to remember, the part-time officers fill in the openings, the slots that need to be filled, you're not having the part-time officers just come on board and then having another officer do trucks, it's not laid out to work that way, we'd be over our cap. So if we put Officer Luna back on day work, working just doing trucks, and then bring in these part-time officers that I am trying to use, and you fill the schedule that you had Gary Zappana in before, that will become a problem with the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board, that is an unfair labor practice.
But they're not getting the hours, the 30 hours.
No, they're not. We have always set up that the part-time officers are there to cover the sick time, the vacation time, and the K time for the officers. They do not have permanent shifts, no one does.
So we should always have two officers on the street, then?
We should, but the problem gets to be is that, excuse me?
We do, don't we?
We do, two per shift.
Because if someone calls out, then the part-timer should be filling that position.
And you would think so, but what ended up happening after the 30-hour rule got put into effect in the employee's handbook, that I had multiple officers are now working for other police departments, too, because they weren't able to get the amount of hours they needed.
Their livelihood.
So they can only work 30 hours. I had officers here that were here for 10 years, that would drop anything they had going on, they'd be here, and would work 40.
But they shouldn't be getting 50 or 60 hours a week.
Excuse me?
They shouldn't be getting 50 or 60 hours a week if they're part-time, correct?
Oh, it depends on what legal jargon you want to go with, okay? You shake your head, but we're under 50, that's a whole thing with the ACA, that's a whole different issue. But the problem is, I can't force people to work. So what forced these officers to do, they went over and worked in Yardley or worked in Tellytown, to pick up more hours so they can feed their family, they can't work on 30 hours. And the system, the way Marshall is set up, and I didn't set this system up, this has been this way forever, that the officers that are here part-time are just here to make up the time for vacation and everything else. And now come this summer, when we get to that point again, we're going to have a problem, we're not going to have two guys on the street.
Well, maybe we should get something that can work.
Well, how do you do that, ma'am?
I don't know.
You can't. This is a tough time. Everybody across the nation is talking about the shortage of police officers. No one wants to be a police officer now. It's a tough time. Everybody's a critic of law enforcement. And guys, the young kids coming out of college don't want to do this job. It takes a special person to do this job, it takes a special person to go over to an apartment complex and pick up five bodies. You guys just don't understand that.
I understand that.
You don't, you haven't lived that.
So if I may, Madam President.
May I sit?
Please. So nine full-time officers, there's 28 shifts a week, I'm sorry, 28 shifts a week, 27 shifts in just full-time officers, I get that there's Kelly time, there's late, there's sick leave, there's vacation time, eight part-time officers. All council can do is give the resources. We provided the resources to have 27 shifts a week in full-time, and, by the way, quite a few shifts a week in part-time. I get that it's difficult, nobody's saying it isn't. What I don't get is how council is being held responsible for the actual schedules when all council can do is provide the resources, which we've done, along with a budget, along with a budget.
It's not public.
Along with.
It's not public comment at this time, it's the official's comment, thank you. It's official's comment at this time, please.
Along.
Mr. Pasture, it's official's comment.
Along with a budget that is more than the police department has ever spent in this town, ever.